Okay, will you mute yourself, Jeanette? There you go. Okay. All right. Are we ready, Tabby?
We are ready. We are recording.
Okay, everybody. Good evening. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, to order at 6:31. I'd entertain any public comments. Sarah?
I just wanted to report that Travis and I met with Chuck Clarisi from Efficiency Vermont to review the various energy uses in the town buildings and start to formulate a strategy for using some of the available money to offset the cost of making some improvements. And I will be getting a report from him shortly, and then we will share that in more detail.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah, for doing that. Anybody else? Anybody in Zoom land? Hearing none, we will move on to the Police Department. We're going to look at the updating the personnel policy, including the new pay differential that was included in the budget that was passed at Town Hall. Randy?
Right, so I communicated with Sarah, and Sarah, I don't know, did you send out what?
I didn't send it. I sent it to you, and I didn't send it to the rest of the board, but I have a copy of it.
So, basically, the only thing that's getting changed within that personnel policy is the pay differential part of it?
So, do you know what page or section?
So, it's going to be on page four.
Those are the pages, pages four and five?
Yep, page four.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yep. And I have a copy of this, Sarah and I talked about, and she printed it, sent it to me the other day, and I go, "Yep, it looks just like what we talked about." So, in short, what's going to end up, excuse me, what's going to end up, it's going to basically change, it's just because of the pay rate is different. So, now it's $2 for Sunday through Saturday night shift, you know, above the regular rate, and Saturday and Sunday, it's also $2 above the regular rate.
For day shift?
So, in short, it's pretty much, and Sarah, she can go into more of it after that, but in short, all it's really doing is just replacing those dollar amounts into the personnel policy. There's a little bit of language and some other things got changed, but that's the biggest part. And I was telling Sarah that it doesn't necessarily have to get approved tonight, it just has to be approved before we start the new fiscal year, because that's when the new budget happens, and just that I'm also not going to be here within two weeks, you know, at the next board meeting. So, Sarah, if you want to, I mean, go over it.
So, how many places is it changing, actually?
It's changing, let me just see here, okay, section E went from five sections to three.
Okay.
And section F went from four sections to one. Basically, what, like Randy said, what it is, is that we've now, instead of having the, we have this, we have this differential for this kind of shift, and this differential for this kind of shift. We have one differential. And it's $2, regardless of whether it's an evening weekday shift or any of the weekend shifts. So, that, the on-call pa, or the, where is it? The police differential pay, which starts at the bottom of page four and goes to the top of page five, gives various examples depending on the different kinds of differentials that are applicable for that kind of shift, and there's only the one differential now.
The $2.
Didn't need that much explanation. So, it shortens the explanation, is what it does.
Okay.
And it reinforces the idea that if someone is working on a holiday that is also a shift differential, their differential is applied to their base rate, and then the time and a half is calculated, not, not the time and a half, the differential's not added after time and a half is calculated.
Okay. I think that the whole board should actually get to see this before we approve it. I will not be here at the next meeting either, so Sarah is the one in the know on this, but the whole board should get to digest this, I think.
I can email it to Jeanette, and she can send it to the rest of the board.
I just like, I'd like to try to, because this is the first time I've seen it, I'd like to marry it up with what I've got, but if you can do that, I think, are you okay with that, Joe and Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, thank you. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I think we just need to look at it.
No, absolutely, and that's why I was coming, Sarah, that it didn't have to get approved because it's going to the board meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving to the Highway Department. Affirm the decision on Road Foreman Brian Moore's pay increase. I see Travis is here with us. Travis, can you tell us what's going on with Brian Moore's pay and why?
Yes, I'd like to raise Brian Moore's pay up 50 cents, because he's taken over Bill Short's position as a road foreman for me.
And so, what will that make his pay, Travis?
That'll make his pay at 24, 48, I believe.
Nope. Jeanette?
24, 79, or something?
24, 72, very close.
72, okay, yeah.
He'll take the 79, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yep.
And that's because of increased responsibilities with him being the road foreman?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Any discussion about this? Anyone who want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve an increase of 50 cents per hour in road foreman Brian Moore's pay, which will bring him to 24, 72 per hour.
Second.
Anybody have anything to say about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And congratulations to Brian on his promotion to road foreman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Travis?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving into unfinished business, which includes update on the Town Hall kitchen. So, we have a subcommittee who's been working on this?
Oh, yeah. So, essentially, a kitchen.
And Jeanette, too, right? Who was in the subcommittee? You and Jeanette and?
Well, and Dave Smith, though.
Dave is more of a?
Well, I think when we look at this stage, should get an idea what I'm proposing, whether or not, it's fair to conclude or not. Essentially, you have four sinks in the right-hand corner of the place. If you were to cook something on the stove, you'd have to walk at 25 feet to the sink. And you have a pantry in the middle there, that doesn't even plug in, it plugs in at the other end of the kitchen. So, I did a drawing of moving the stove close to the sinks and putting a refrigerator next to it, whatever refrigerator we decided to get. I have three estimates. I know that Bell Val talked about, he liked the True Refrigerator, which is an excellent refrigerator. Equal to that is a Beverage Air or an Artic Air, and prices range from $2,300 to $3,600. I mean, I didn't shop this all the way, but those are good commercial refrigerators. Every commercial refrigerator comes with a five-year compressor warranty and a three-year parts and labor warranty, so they're all the same in that regard.
Does Belleville, are you aware if they service all of those brands?
Yeah, he can service any of these.
Okay.
But if he likes the True, we get the True, you know? He's selling the True, and maybe if he has a competitive price, when it comes to pricing it, we should consider that.
Jeanette?
Well, he had given me an estimate on his refrigerator.
How much?
Which was $45.95.
Yeah, well, you could buy it for 36, they deliver it free from any one of these restaurant supply places.
So, I guess the moral of that is definitely shop around?
Yeah, we'll shop around for it. But essentially, by moving the stove over is no problem, because there was a gas outlet there for the flat top that they took out, and moving the refrigerator over, whenever we get a new refrigerator, would not be a problem at all. And actually, it's supposed to be a triangle. I would also contemplate, I talked to Dave, we have the water spigot there for doing pasta, that could be moved over where the hand wash sink is, and the hand wash sink could be put over there. So, it's just a matter of moving some stuff around, because it looks like when they got this stuff, as it came off the truck, they put it against the wall and set it up, they never really thought about how it would work.
Yeah, in my recollection, there was thought put into how it would work. And, you know, maybe, maybe it wasn't.
She's been in 100 professional kitchens and major restaurants, and they always work in a triangle, where you have stove, sink.
So, I think that, to me, the critical part is we get a working refrigerator that will not malfunction during functions this summer. I think that that's critical.
But if you put it next to the two ovens, it's going to malfunction. It's just impossible. The amount of BT years that those two ovens put up, you could never have anything against it. So, it's placed improperly.
So, so where are you proposing putting that refrigerator?
To the left of the stove.
And then?
There's about two feet in between.
And then the convection oven to the left of that?
They'll stay just where they are. The only thing I'd do is move the hand wash sink over here, or that over there.
Okay. Jeanette?
So, you're talking about you wanted to move the stove over where the riddle was, right?
Yes.
Hooking up there.
Right.
And then where's the refrigerator going?
Next to the left of the stove. A couple of feet away, you know, not like on.
The vent is right behind the stove.
A fan.
Yeah.
Right.
You don't really have a legal kitchen anyway, because you don't have fire suppression in the kitchen, so.
Right, I think the refrigerator moved.
Obstruct the fan.
If that's the height. Remember, I did this in Photoshop, it's not done in real life.
Oh, right, I know.
Well, actually, the new refrigerator's the same height as the old refrigerator, it's going to cover it.
Yeah. Sarah's looking right at it.
Well, here's a picture here, and you can see, yeah, it probably would be covering the fan, but they might have to move the fan up.
Okay, all right.
But it's better than blowing a refrigerator all the time, and making it impossible, if you had a, you know, one of the big pots full of pasta, there's no way you're going to get it over to the sink, because that would be very dangerous for somebody to spill it, and obviously, here, government was supposed to be concerned about health and safety.
Richard?
Thank you, Richard. Just one small comment. You talk, when you say fan, are you talking about the heater that blows on the refrigerator?
I think so, there's another fan.
There's a fan, ventilation fan.
If you, yeah, if you come over here and look, you'll see it.
Oh, no, I'm talking about, there's a heater that blows on the refrigerator.
Yes, there is, on the freezer, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
Which is at negative five, which I guess Mr. Clarisi said that was not, Clarisi was not an optimal temperature for a freezer, too low.
It was an awful lot of unnecessarily expenditure of energy to keep a freezer that cold with nothing in it.
Hmm, it is. Zero is maximum. But I was concerned about the heat from that heater blowing on a refrigerator that's in that place, it's kind of counterproductive.
You could move that over then, once you got the refrigerator out of the way.
Can I make one other comment?
Yes, you may.
Bell Val, I, you know, I know him, I know who does this one, you know, personal friend, maybe. Sometimes it's better to consider buying local, because when you need that repaired, you might get a little more priority in service. Something like Dan said, maybe you can argue a bit of price.
You can also see from the picture that the double oven is vented outside, which makes it illegal to use it.
So, we'd make it, we don't want to move it then, either?
No, no, I wouldn't move that at all. It's no purpose to move it.
Yes.
I also wanted to bring up Travis, and I had a conversation about making sure that the next one we buy, that we check out the longevity on the model and the support from the manufacturer, because part of our problem here is not being able to get parts, and so looking for a track record on how long they support their product.
I don't really think that's an issue, because.
Well, I'm just repeating what was said to me.
Yeah, well, a True is a very, probably used in more restaurants than any other refrigerator there is, so that's one that you never.
But I would still, I still think we should make it a consideration.
I think so.
You should ask the question.
Have you ever heard of this refrigerator-freezer combo before?
No, usually you go to a dealer, whoever it was, and whatever they're selling, they're selling. I have six entree devices in my place, and I never know where it came from. They happen to be 10 years old, and they're working. Bell Val's replaced compressors in three of them. So, they're all commercial ones, that you can do that.
So.
Company goes out of business, it goes out of business, but True, Artic Air, or Beverage Air are not going out of business anytime soon. They probably have the market cornered on professional refrigeration.
So, my concern, oh, sorry, it's not a question of them going out of business, it's supporting a model. How quickly do they turn over their models, and how quickly do they stop supplying replacement parts for those models? That, I'm not, there's no way to predict when a business is going to go under. I understand that, but there are some manufacturers that churn through their model designs more quickly than others and stop supporting them sooner than others. And I just am asking that we ask that question.
Hold on.
Well, I defer to Mr. Sedlack, who's professional in the industry. Tell them about compressors.
They've been using, with the exception of the compressors, at the end of last year, it was mandated by EPA that all refrigerators now use R600A to maintain refrigerant, much more energy-efficient compressors, so you're going to get that no matter what. Thermostats, control boards, and the True, they've been the same for the past 14, 15 years. There's really, the only thing that may change is the size of the doors, your doors may change, panels trim.
Hold on. Joe?
So, why can't we fix that one again? I forgot.
Because we can't get the part.
Jeanette?
The manufacturer is out of business, and the place can't be used.
Well, well, this is not a free-for-all conversation, please. Yes, Dan?
According to Richard, I know more about this than anybody I know, because it was next to the oven, the insulation inside the door has collapsed, which is making the compressor run harder.
Ah, yeah, sounds all right.
So, that, the problem is more insulation than the compressor. And you can't take it apart and fix the pipes inside the door.
Correct.
You can replace the compressor.
Yeah, yeah, so, keeping it, it's a bit away, so.
Okay. And all of these refrigerators, can I ask a question? They're all on wheels, correct?
Everyone, every commercial device is on wheels.
I just want to make sure, because my concern is the summer, and I assume, Jeanette, you know better than us, is there usage of the hall this summer, people are planning to start using it again?
Um, yes.
Okay. Okay, hold on one second, I, I lost my thought there. So, I, I think it's important that we get a refrigerator here, the reconfiguration maybe could happen during, because who knows, we're going to have to move some piping potentially, some drains, so this could take a while, and we do not want this building to be out of service for the summer.
Right.
So, if we get a refrigerator, put it there, and then do our reconfiguration at a less busy time, that might be something, and granted, we're going to run it next to that convection oven.
Well, we can roll the stuff.
Yeah.
We can use the heater in the summer.
Right, roll it towards the heater.
Put it locked, so that the refrigerator can't roll to the oven for the inter-time figuring out what we're.
Travis?
Yes, to answer Joe's question on why this one can't be repaired anymore, is it's been charged. You're only allowed, from what I understand, you're only allowed to charge the system with the Freon and whatever else they need to do so many times. This one has taken its last charge, and they, they said they wouldn't do it again, so.
Other comments? How should we go forward from here? Dan?
I think we should bring Dave up here, because he's the maintenance guy. Show him what I think we should do in terms of moving stuff, and he should talk to the plumber, and he only needs to talk to a plumber essentially, to make it all work.
Okay.
He has company.
Okay. I'm concerned we're going to do that right in the middle of the summer. That's my concern. So, if we want to do that and have the plans ready to go at a less busy time than the summer, I'm just concerned we're going to make our kitchen unusable for a period of time if we have to coordinate plumbers and electricians, or what, or gas company, or whatever it is. Does anybody else have that same concern?
Actually, I have a question.
Yes, Sarah?
Could we check with Andy about the booking for the Town Hall and see if there's currently a window when it would make sense to do it without disrupting plans that people already, already scheduled?
Scott?
How, just how, do they have to tell you a certain amount in advance to be able to use it?
No, they can call up tomorrow and say, is it free?
So, it's still like?
It could, but we would at least have it be in smoke. Eric?
So, I think until you have somebody look at it, you have no idea how long it's going to take, right?
Right.
This could be a day, it could be a week, we don't know, so I don't think it hurts to have someone look at it, and then make a call from there.
Dan?
The gas line's already there, it's just moving the stove over, and moving the new refrigerator there is a no-brainer. The water lines is another story. That will not stop the place from being used.
Okay. So, I think we need to figure out exactly which refrigerator we can purchase, also at the same time, that is a good model, that we think it will have support, and is not cost-effective. So.
And all these companies deliver it free, and it comes on a truck that loads it off over the tailgate.
And I think you also can give Darrell at Belleville the opportunity to quote against that as well.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Jeanette, do you have any other comments about it?
Um, no, so, we're going to do a movement forward.
We're going to have Dave come up, check out the movement and see what that involved. We will try to get prices from the companies involved, plumbers, gas company, if we need them, and then we're also going to, at the same time, figure out exactly which refrigerator we're going to purchase. And the price. Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Dan?
When we're doing it with Dave, could you inform me, you know, from Bobby, and be part of at least a bit of, or a thank you to be there?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Jeanette. And Joe, is she officially putting up a Xan?
So, just, I mean, I wouldn't mind making a motion that if we come up with a price up to X amount that we order the refrigerator, seeing we don't know how long that refrigerator's going to last, and get that at least.
Yeah, and I have no idea about the lottery.
Right?
Right, right. We don't know how long.
For another two weeks, for another meeting.
Okay.
So.
So, the most expensive one?
I would make a motion that we at least, you know, purchase whatever, you know, the best price, not even higher than $4,000 or whatever, so that you guys can at least order the refrigerator, so that I'm not in a special meeting getting a refrigerator, because I assume if you don't just order it and come the next day, or doesn't, I don't think so, especially where you live.
So, Joe's made a motion that we order a refrigerator, not to exceed $4,000. Would somebody like to second that? Scott seconds that. Any other discussion on getting the refrigerator?
I would like to reiterate my concern that we not just consider price.
Quality, I'm sure that these all have reviews.
Quality, reputation, longevity.
Just giving a number.
So, would you like to also modify your motion to?
Sure, I would modify that we get longevity, not just price.
Quality.
Longer time, when we can get a car that's been around for a while, up to $4,000.
Second.
You will amend your?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the refrigerator for the Town Hall for right now? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to purchase a refrigerator not to exceed $4,000 with, when we're including quality, longevity, and service?
Aye.
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 Very good. All right, next one on unfinished business is reappointments. We neglected to do a few when we reorganized a few weeks ago, so we need to reappoint the zoning administrator, Tabby Freeman, to a three-year term.
So, moved?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Oh.
The matter of the complaint filed by the zoning administrator with the Department of Environmental Conservation still hasn't been settled. She's refusing to accept what the A and R officer and CEO McVeigh put in a report, which I sent to all of you sometime in March. I have a copy of that here, if you're. May I approach?
Yes, I know you've already sent that to us. So, is this your main, are you, are to her reappointment, otherwise we were not going to have a zoning administrator today?
This, that's not my concern. My concern is we have a zoning administrator that performs these actions unwarranted, no evidence, no site visit, and I'm with to deal with the add at expense of it.
So, I think that she's waiting for, we were, as a town, as far as I understand, and I'm not the person who, who, we have never been notified. They notified you, but they never notified the town, and since the town was a, you know, a party in this, they probably should have had, we should have had some notification, and I know Tabby's been trying to acquire that. We have never been notified by the town, but of the same information that they sent to you. I find it kind of unique that they didn't copy the town on it.
That's a question for CEO McVeigh, but he's there in his office. I don't understand why we're 10 months into this and not been done. Thank you. This is a public complaint, it's a matter of public record, and I made no violations.
Tabby, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes, the department has been reached out to both by mail, email, and by voice. I have not yet heard back from them on why the town was not notified. I have also reached out and had a conversation with the wildlife person, Forrest Hammond, who gave me some information and is coming back to me with some additional information, because he was reached out to on this as well, or should have been by Mr. Sedlack. Mr. Hammond has told me that he has never been contacted by Mr. Sedlack about this. The question and the issue at hand is the notice that went to you was a warning of pending violation, and additional information, especially due to COVID, took quite some time to get back to us. This is still a warning, it is not a formal posted violation.
Yes, it's a matter of public record with the Department of Environmental Conservation. It was posted on their website.
Yes.
And it's a matter of permanent record, there was three accusations made in here, and they were all false. No violations found. That's my concern, because I have licenses with the EPA.
The system works, okay, where you are allowed to post an inquiry and request for investigation, which is what happened. They came down, the three agencies who reported in there, and there were other agencies that still have yet to return information, found that from what they looked at, and from what you discussed with them, they were comfortable with the work that you did. Therefore, there is no standing violation. It triggers an investigation, which happened. They looked at several of those items and determined that you were allowed to do the land clearing and movement of dirt by their categories. There are still some questions, I mean, still, the town requires that a permit be taken out for any development, and that was what triggered the investigation and the inquiry.
Yes.
Page 19 of the zoning administrator's handbook from the Vermont Planning Commission states that in discovering a violation, and I have copies of this for all of you if you like it, the investigation. like it, the investigation begins with a phone call or letter to the landowner explaining the reason for the suspicious suspicion. Then, on the next page, it talks about that you must have permission to enter the landowner's property. It's in Tabby's report in January, she submitted pictures of a ditch on my property while standing on my property. I did not give permission for anyone to enter my property and take pictures. You have all this in the report. This ditch is 15 to 20 feet south of the property line from 21 St. Row, it is on my property.
That picture was taken from the neighbor's property while standing on their property?
It's impossible because the camera's over the ditch.
Okay. We need to get this resolved, we need to get the, I I don't know that it, I don't know that it stays on your record forever, it sounds like it's an inquiry, it's not a formal violation, we need to get this resolved, okay? We need to bring this to full circle. This should not be happening, I mean, are you basically telling us that that under these terms, you don't feel we should appoint her as a zoning administrator?
Correct.
Board comments? Yes, Dan?
Having a little town hall at the Coffee Barn, obviously, as the select constituents come to me with complaints, there were three complaints against the zoning department.
Okay. I think this is.
It's a matter of public record.
I think that this is executive session, I mean, you are, you are a select board member, and so they were not brought to the board, so none of the rest of the board is aware of this?
Well, I sent you an email. I don't want it to see you.
I did, I did. All right.
I think Tabby's qualified, I think sometimes the judging is she goes too far because she's too busy doing a lot of things. I will not vote for her, but I won't vote against her either.
Well, we all voted, and I didn't hear you abstain.
No, I didn't vote.
Okay, you didn't vote.
There was not a vote.
All right.
We started to vote and then Richard raised a Sam, so it kind of cut it.
I said, I did.
Right.
I know some other people did, but we have, we pulled back on that. So how does this board want to proceed? Sarah?
I believe we should move ahead with the vote, and if there are specific areas of concern, they should be addressed in executive session or during employee review.
Mm-hmm.
And have that conversation privately with Tabby and give her an opportunity to present what she feels is is accurate, we can, if we wish, ask her to do some research prior to her review, so that we have as much information as possible available to us. But I don't believe it's appropriate for us as board members to be discussing her performance in an open meeting. That is executive session material only.
I agree. I would like to see Mr. Sedlax and questions and concerns answered, though, in a timely manner, very much.
Thank you. But just for the record, Mr. Sedlax, we are working on, we have talked to Tabby, she's waiting for responses from other state agencies, correct, Tabby?
That's correct.
That we have not got. So we can only push as hard as we can at the state level to get those answers, okay? So don't think that we've forgotten about what's going on, we're trying to resolve. But obviously, we'll have to try again and keep trying to get something back from the state, from the three different agencies that have not, which everyone has not responded to our requirements, okay? So we are working on it. It is frustrating, I know, on your end, it's very frustrating on our end. Try to resolve it.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Are you prepared to make a decision on this?
Aye.
Sure.
Okay, so all those in favor indicate by raising their hand. All those against? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. We are now going to appoint the grand juror for a one-year term, Andy McLean.
I move that we appoint Andy McLean as grand juror to a one-year term.
Second. Any discussion about this appointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we appoint Andy McLean to the Conservation Committee membership term, a four-year term.
Second. Any discussion about appointing Andy to the Conservation Commission for a four-year term? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have new appointments to the DRB, two alternates, because we were down to zero alternates, because our alternates became actual board members.
One became a board member, one requested that we not reappoint.
Okay. So we have Sarah Hyde and Jack Conway each for one-year terms. Sarah, do you want to talk about these?
Just our last DRB meeting, we we interviewed both of the candidates, and the board consensus was that they were qualified and that we would like to have them join us as alternates.
Any discussion? Does somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Sarah Hyde and Jack Conway as alternates to the Development Review Board for one-year terms.
Okay.
Do we have a?
Joe?
Joe.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And just as a point of reference, I was supposed to have been reappointed this year, there was, there was one set of, there was one expiration date on my term on the website, another one appeared in the town report, and that's when Jeanette and I realized that I I'm up for reappointment. So I have requested that the vice chair of the of the DRB write a letter to the select board to have me reappointed at the next meeting.
Which you will be running.
Which I will be running, which I will have to.
Okay, thank you for that. And now, we're going to revisit the board rules that we didn't have in front of us last meeting. Now, these were adopted last March 2020, and Sarah has brought to my attention something she might want to have changed.
So I I would like, there are point nine, it says there's no limit to the number of times a select word member can speak to a question. A member may speak or make a motion without being recognized by the chair. I'm suggesting that's the word speak or be removed, that people, that select word members should be recognized by the chair before speaking.
But they can make a motion at any time.
Right.
What do you think, board? Need you have to raise your hand.
Only.
It'll.
Yes.
All it does is align the policy with the practice that we attempt to adhere to.
You can always say point of order.
We sometimes fail, but, yeah, point of order does, it doesn't eliminate point of order.
Dan?
Aye.
Scott?
Do our best to raise our hand.
Do our best.
So Sarah, do you want to make a motion to accept these as amended?
I make a motion that we accept the Dover Select Board Meeting rules of procedure with the amendment discussed.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeanette, you want this one marked up? Do you have?
Sure.
We are ready for our Economic Development Department, and the first thing is to review possibly approved signage program applicants, Collectors Cottage and T C's.
Hello.
Hi, Shannon.
I'm being projected on the wall, aren't I?
Yeah.
Um, yes, two signage applications. Collectors Cottage is seeking $1,377 for a new sign, and T C's will be repainting their sign, refinishing, and is seeking a $360.25 grant.
Dan, you are recommending, Shannon, we approve both of these?
Yes, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about these two signs? It was emailed to us, I believe, on Friday. Sarah?
Do we have applications for sign permits?
Collectors Cottage has an approved sign permit application. T C's, if they are simply repainting as existing, does not need one.
Yeah, it won't change location or size.
Then I make a motion that we approve the applications for Collectors Cottage and T C's signs.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Scott?
So I wonder if I have to abstain, because my wife works with T C's.
Is she doing something with the sign?
She might have worked on making the motion, or helped write up something on there. I don't know, I'll just abstain. She wasn't sure about, whatever.
He, he's concerned of a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
I think writing a sign application is probably not a conflict of interest, but.
Didn't think so, but.
Good, good.
She's trying to make sure.
All right, all those in favor of approving these two signs, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a lot of do-it applications, right? Shannon, all at the last minute?
Um, many, yes, at the last minute, which is, I suppose, to be expected. Um, so there are 13 that I sent that were complete applications, that I recommend those projects, and then there were four more additional, two which were incomplete. They were given chances to send everything over, but I didn't receive them as of yet, and then two that I don't recommend their projects. So.
So the amount that Shannon is in favor of us approving or recommends is $52,621.82. Shannon, how much, how much does that leave us in our do-it?
Um, we budgeted $55,000 for do-it, but then we also budgeted $12,500 for a possible paving program, but as of that, Eric and I have not been able to figure out how to run, but this would be under the budgeted amount.
And several of these projects, if I'm correct, include paving?
Yes, yep, there are two paving, true paving projects, and then one, a ceiling of existing paving.
Does the board have any questions about the do-it program applications of Shannon? Sarah does.
Hi. So you had said that the Dover Cinema, your recommendation was against it, was it because it's a nonprofit, or because it was a nonprofit that didn't seek an appropriation?
Um, well, nonprofits in this program are supposed to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, based on their past applications for things. It had seemed as though the board felt that them not seeking an appropriation was maybe something to consider.
Okay. Because Mount, is Mount Snow Academy a nonprofit?
Uh, Mount Snow Academy, yes.
Yes, so that's why I was asking the question, because Mount Snow Academy is a nonprofit, correct?
Um, I'm actually not 100% sure.
Okay.
Yes, I'm getting a nod from.
So that, that's what I'm, that's why I was asking for the distinction, was it because it was a nonprofit, or because it was a nonprofit that didn't seek appropriations?
Yeah, I, it, it would seem to me as requesting an appropriation is a good way to fund projects you need to do, but these are all for you to make those decisions on.
Well, my biggest comment on the Dover Cinema is it's not open, it hasn't been open. When is it going to be open? I would want all of those questions answered, are they coming back, what are they going to be doing, which I have not been clear to anybody, so I I would like to have that clarification before we approved any money for them. I think they, I'd like to see what their business plan is going forward, because honestly, they've been closed a really long time, and I'm sure the building did take a hit. So I am concerned about where that particular business is going, and Eric's nodding.
The only extra information I did receive from them is just that they planned to do this work this summer, but I didn't have a lot of time for extra questions, it came in really late last night.
Okay. Any other questions about this list? So for just the public's information, the approved ones that, the one, the recommended ones are Kitsah for paving, T C's for landscaping and parking lot, Two Tannery Landscaping and Parking Lot, Gray Ghost Paving, Mountaineer Windows Facade, Taddy's, the Valley Center for landscaping, Big Bear's Lodge, a new roof, Mount Snow Academy, new windows, which are required by the Fire Marshal, the Great Moose for a roof, Doveberry for chimney and landscaping, Snow Creek Inn for facade doors and windows, rentals only, ramp, park, and a parking lot, and Deerfield Valley Inn for a fire pit and outdoor seating. Yes, Sarah?
On the Kitsah, the, I didn't see a second page for the application in the.
Yeah, I didn't.
Was, did the, did you get it and it just didn't scan properly?
It did not scan right.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, yes, um.
Page, the second page of the application form didn't come through.
Yep, so their answers to that are, will this project improve the aesthetics of the building, are yes, it will remove the mud and dirt from the front of the building, will it increase economic activity, yes, it will encourage visitors to require safe parking for their groups, and other sources of funding are that they will be paying the remaining balance, not covered by the do-it program themselves. Um, but yes, sorry, I missed that one, because they were the very first complete application we received.
So I did have one question on the Snow Creek, their manager is the person who's going to be, the person who manages the building is the person who's going to be doing all the work?
Um.
And not that I don't think that Snow Creek could use a, an upgrade, but I just, I, that's a little close to home, but what are your thoughts?
They're, they're not asking for any money for labor, though. It looked like all they were asking for was money for material, oh, no, they were, excuse me.
No, yeah, there's $1,500 for labor on an estimate from Candace's Home Services.
Does anybody else have any concerns about that one? Okay, fine. Snow Creek?
Oh.
Because generally, we want an outside contractor to do most of the work, and and Taddy's is also, I assume she's going to plant all the plants she purchases?
Yes, but to a clarification on that one, I'm sorry, I forgot to point this out, as a mobile business, she's actually not eligible, but she applied on behalf of the Valley Center owner, and it was approved by the owner to do.
Okay, so that's Meg Ramsey who owns that, so she's improving Meg's property?
Yes.
Yes, Eric?
She is a landscaper, when she's not in the food trucks, she is actually a qualified contractor to be taking care of that one.
Okay. Scott?
But she's not asking for a fee for that, right? She's just going to do that.
Whatever.
Three hundred and.
Yeah, I mean.
Hers was just materials.
Plants.
Just materials, right?
Plants and materials.
Yeah, there's nothing in there for labor.
Yes, Dan?
There's an estimate for Kitsah, who did the estimate? We don't see it here on the screen.
Vermont Road Works.
Okay. Yeah, I think that one just missed a few pages.
Sorry.
Anything else? Scott?
Sorry, I just, the Snow Creek Inn, I missed this, so Candice is.
Their manager.
That, and that, and they have a home services business?
They're, no, yes, Candy's Home Services.
That, okay.
Any other discussion about this? Any other discussion about this?
I have a comment.
Well, Sarah, make a comment.
My comment is just that most of these people don't seem to unders, I mean, the applications all say there's no other, not all. Many of them say no other source of funding, but there has to be another source of funding because otherwise they couldn't do the projects. So are they not understanding that they need to say, we're covering it, or you know, it's coming out of revenue, or say, or something like that?
I think they're just not being specific that they're paying the balance, but all of their estimates show, and their project total costs are more than their grants, they're just not noting it.
I just want to make sure they're not getting the money and then thinking, we'll figure out the rest.
Oh, no, most of them are repeat too, so.
No, no, I mean, almost everyone on this list has actually received one of these grants at some point. So I think the confusion there, we can change the wording when we go to put this out next year, is just, you know, like the town of Wilmington, when they ask, you know, are you receiving any additional funding? They, they maybe you have any other outside funding that's coming in to take care of like an event or something like that. So I think that was the confusion there. We'll update the wording on that just to make it clear that besides your own money, is there any other outside funding coming in this project?
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for us to approve fifty-two thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents in the do-it program for thirteen projects recommended by the Economic Development Department.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion from anybody? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move to the Dover Business Plan Competition.
So I sent all of you, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm getting there. That's so much work. Go, go ahead, Eric.
So I sent all of you a basic outline of what our department is thinking of running for a Business Plan Competition for the town of Dover. The guidelines will be very similar to what was run down in Wilmington, with the exception that we will not be accepting a tie. There will be one winner chosen, and that's, that's part of the rules. So the, the nice part about this project is that with all the work that Megan Gratchen did down in Wilmington, they were happy to share that with us so that we don't have to recreate the wheel here. We've been given the basic outline of everything. We've been given score, given the scoring rubrics, you know, the timelines, all of those things. So literally, it would be us taking that, tweaking it to be for the town of Dover and implementing the project. My idea here, and I put this in the letter to you guys, is that we launch this in conjunction with the announcement of, you know, our loan program with the BDCC, which after some work with RT, we've decided that the Dover portion of it would be used specifically for either buying down the rate on the loan for the business or providing them with outside technical assistance that cannot be provided by BDCC. Which is, I think, a little more responsible on our part, instead of just handing them a pile of money to go and do as they please. So the idea here is that by the time we get to the end of this thing, we should have a number of, we should have a number of qualified businesses who are ready to get going, should there be money in place to start their business. So the idea is the winner would get that twenty thousand dollar winning prize. The other applicants who had made it that far in the competition would then be turned to the BDCC and the program, the program that we're running with them to say, look, you can still start your business, you're just going to have to do it a different way. The idea comes from, we just have, we have some empty spaces in town, and they're not filling up as quickly as I'd like to see that happen. So I think that this, you know, you look at what it did down in Wilmington, you look at what it's done in other towns around the state and even regionally. I mean, this is the kind of thing that can really get excitement going about a community and, you know, growing, starting a business. So that's literally what I put in front of you. Please don't take that as the word, because I just, I wanted your approval before Shannon and I dove too deep into this thing and put a lot of work into it to say, you know, no at the end. So what would happen if you guys decide that you want to move forward with this is that, you know, we would go ahead and get everything updated in terms of rules and timelines and, you know, start getting everything lined up so that we can put all of that in front of you. If it's something you want to go in front of or legal, we can do that as well. But I just didn't want to do too much of that work without having an idea one way or the other if you guys were interested in running a program like this.
Dan?
How many empty spaces or places for potential business do you estimate are in the town?
Estimated? I would say fifteen. Quality spaces, you know, right on, you know, on Route one hundred or just off. And you'll see in the, in the outline for this project that this would take, you know, would give a special emphasis on businesses that we don't currently have. So I'm not looking for six more ski shops. I'm looking for things that we don't current. I, I don't want to compete with anybody that we have already in town. I want to, I want to see new businesses and add to the mix as opposed to just getting more and seeing.
Any other board questions or comments? Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, you were, you were talking about a community-wide brainstorming session to determine what the needs and wants would be for a new business in town. So would somebody have to come, fall within what came out of that brainstorming? Or that would just be a, like, here's, we would include this as possibly one of the criteria, would be looking at whether it meets a specifically requested need?
Yes, Eric?
So I, I think the idea when this was done down in Wilmington is that there may have been people who didn't necessarily have that final business idea, but after hearing the wants and needs of what the community says, and you know what, that is a really good idea, and came back to the competition with some of the things that came out of that meeting. I think it's just, it's a productive way for the community and the other business owners to feel like they're involved in the decision-making and the process so that it feels like a team effort as opposed to, you know, us just picking someone up.
Yes.
And would we consider, it's not really, what I'm thinking about is not really an expansion, but the idea that an existing business could come up with a new, something, an adjunct business that would be similar, but not be this, not just make this, not just make your restaurant larger, but come up with a gourmet food store as an adjunct to what you serve, that kind of thing.
Absolutely. So you'll notice, I mean, obviously, anyone who followed the Business Plan Competition at Wilmington, both of those businesses were actually operating, but they were sharing spaces with businesses within the downtown. The idea of them entering that contest was that they would be able to take their business to that next level and put them into their own space, which again, is my goal here, is to fill those spaces.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott?
No, I, I love it. I like the idea. And I mean, look, there's, even the people that didn't get it, A1, they're still a business. They, they've opened up, so I think that's great. And I don't, you know, need to monopolize time here, but I would love to connect and just, I mean, we're still in the brainstorming idea, but I would, I like it, and I would love to bump some ideas or just throw, throw some stuff out there.
Eric?
I'm a firm believer that the big carrot on the stick here is that, yes, there is the possibility you could win that money, but there is also that program, which is a really great program, and you're going to get tech, like specified technical assistance from RRDC. You're going to get additional money from the town of Dover to, again, either buy down that loan or give you technical assistance outside of BDCC. It's a, that alone is a, is a really great opportunity to start a business. So the idea that we can tie that in with the idea that you could also win the money to start your business, I think we could really drum up some interest in the town of Dover.
Joe, do you have any comments?
Well, I think it's a great idea.
Dan?
I think it worked in Wilmington. Why couldn't it work here?
I think the tie cut the winnings down to a bare bones amount. I mean, I think that ten thousand is, is good, but, you know, it doesn't get you all the way sometimes. So I, I like that, that, that no ties allowed. But who knows what we, what somebody might come up with, so, yes.
Please know that that was not a judgment of the way that Wilmington or anyone in Wilmington ran their, their program. I, I think it was a great idea. I think that we want to stick to that one winner because twenty thousand dollars is a life-changing amount of money when it comes to starting a business. And I think that was initially what they were going for, and it's great they got two businesses out of it, but we're hoping to get even.
So I think the board is all in agreement that the Economic Development Department continue, and I think we're not at the point where we want legal to look at it, but when we come to a more finalized program, then I think we probably do want them to look at it. All right, everybody good with that? Move on. Great. Thank you. Anything else from the Economic Development Department? Great. Consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, which was our reorganizational meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, that would be Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to approve the warrants of. Is it on the agenda? No?
No, because I just did them today.
Do you have it for us? The warrants of May twenty-ninth?
Where's the sign?
It's probably in the bit.
Okay, one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
So I'd like to have a, hear a motion to approve the warrants of May twenty-ninth for one hundred, one thousand, two hundred, eight dollars, sixty-five cents.
So moved.
Any discussion about the warrants? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So FYI, we have right here on Friday morning at nine o'clock, we're going to do our employee evaluations. I have the forms. I will print them out. I also have most of the completed evaluations in my folder here already, so.
So you'll have a blank for each person as well?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Would you like me to scribe?
Yes, and Sarah has offered to scribe because she has beautiful handwriting. And spell, and is very adept at spelling. Trails and Rec Committee meeting Monday on the eighth at six thirty PM. It's a week from Monday, correct? Week from tonight, week from tonight. A special meeting on June eighteenth here again. We'll schedule times, starting at nine o'clock with each town employee. Yes, Jeanette?
Except for Mr. Johnson.
I know. So we'll do a special.
To, well, he was talking about whether you want to try to do it this Friday.
So we're only doing his this Friday? I won't be ready to talk to him.
I mean, once you guys go over and do all your own evaluations involving department heads, you've got a rough time, and you want to do me immediately following, I can't come up.
I need to get to work. It's, we'll be here till probably noon, and I have an appointment with my staff at twelve forty-five.
I just, I just, I know you want to give me that ten percent raise, and we have.
So what day, what day are you leaving for, for wherever you're going?
Um, leaving on Saturday.
Okay. We'll just have to do it when you return. Big surprise.
When you come back?
That will mess up payroll?
That'll mess up payroll. Exactly, after the new.
Okay. So that gives us Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week that we could potentially do it. We could do it by Zoom. Of that, Monday is probably the best day for me.
As long as it doesn't conflict with the Trails and Rec meeting.
No, I thought we'd do it.
It's Tuesday.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Do we want to do it in the evening or during the day? Monday, the seventh.
Do what?
Randy Johnson's review, because he is MIA for the rest of June.
Perfect. Hopefully students need here, but make it happen. I can Zoom it.
Okay, so shall we do it at six o'clock on Monday night? Does that work for everybody's? Um, and set it up as a Zoom meeting, Jeanette?
Okay, so Monday, what's the date?
The seventh.
At seven o'clock?
Six.
And Zoom only?
Zoom only. So one of us will need to be the administrator of it. No, we're not recording it. Yeah.
I was going to say, if Tabby wants to set it up, I can go down to the town office and run it from there.
Oh, no, you can do it from your laptop. So just give it to me. Huh?
I can't host it.
The host.
Oh, she'll make me.
I can set you up for it to be the host, so that you'll be able to then take over and drive from there.
Yeah, just somebody. And I guess Sarah's volunteering.
And I think we need to make a motion that Mr. Johnson cannot go away on vacation for the second half of the month of June every day.
He's got a very important mission, so.
Yes, I know.
Okay, so you're good with that, Randy?
I am. You have a same time award.
Okay. All right. Anything else under FYIs for anybody? Liaison report, oh, you have an FYI? Okay, liaison reports. Yes.
Yes, so, well, I'm talking about that, the sign. I went and met with John at the library to address some of the issues we spoke about last time with the sign, and if they were willing to amend it, and who had made it and everything. I think the, still going to do a little bit more research, but I think there, or his idea behind it is that they thought they were grandfathered in. It didn't have to.
Okay, so that's, he was clearly not, not aware of the situation.
Yes, and so, you know, they put it up because they thought it was grandfathered, and that if we were going to try and change the sign, adding, I think we talked about adding stuff below, and that was the issue that, that they had with the sign before, was that the snow got there and it ate away at it, so you'd have to, so putting something below would be kind of difficult. I asked about putting something above it, and I don't, like, if we wrote, you know, like, yeah, Town Common, it's not that he's like, you know, as long as it wasn't taking away, I'd like his, be opposed. I don't know how that would work. He does obviously have the person that made it. Yeah, and then I just reached out to kids in the country to, to see what, if they had any feelings or thoughts or whatever on there, on the sign, and they said that they just hadn't had a sign, because that's not something, you know, having a sign for the daycare probably wasn't going to attract, you know, any more people or whatever. So, and it was, there was better use of their money in the past. I didn't really get into it on if we were to fund or what road we wanted to go down with that, if I wanted to be like offering that up, or.
Okay. I still think that we'd like to have a cohesive sign for the common. I think that ideally, and I'm sorry that they were unaware of the sign ordinance. The sign that had been there had been there for quite a long time. It, this is a better-looking sign, and I think there's opportunities to add more to it. I think there's no sign whatsoever now for kids in the country on the building or in front of it. And I think that as, if somebody was going to go pick up a child who wasn't familiar, I mean, we, I think that a, a sign is, a small sign is important. And I think that, that even one that said Dover Town Hall, because there's a lot of confusion between this building and the town office. A lot of confusion, right, everybody? So I think that, I'd like to see the sign modified to be a sign that covers this whole.
That's inclusive.
Yeah. So, Scott, do you think that, can you go back with that message?
Sure, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just like looking at the locations and everything myself.
I think this is a wonderful place, this building, and it should have its own sign. It shouldn't be affiliated with the other thing.
Well, it does have a sign on the building that says Dover Town Hall.
Right in the front, come up to Rose.
Well, if we want to revisit the landscape plans that we had for this common, there was going to be a big sign right on the edge here on the corner that was basically a stone, so, stone.
Base?
Base with, with, that was probably curved too, that said Dover Town Common, Dover Town Hall. Very expensive situation, but I, I don't know, where would you suggest a separate sign for the Dover Town Hall? separate sign for the Dover Town Hall be?
This one should come off the top of the hill, right in front of it.
In front of the, here, on the corner?
In the corner.
Under the snowbank?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we also have to look at snow, because snow, that, all, if, I got, I got mail here all winter, and honestly, the snowbanks at one point, you could stand on the road and barely see the top of the steeple, because it was so high right here by these nailboxes.
To the left of the nailboxes and up high.
Okay. Can you go back and talk to us, John, about, you know, what we can do to incorporate?
So I just, just.
At least the daycare? Yes, Joe?
Raise my hand. So what you're asking Scott to do is basically tell the librarian that we want to incorporate the sign that he's put up, or take that sign down and make it correct?
Maybe. I mean, I'd like to get the name of the sign maker, just seeing what adjustments we can do to this particular sign. I think that would be the least cost prohibitive manner. This is, we are the landlords, and they didn't ask us, and we're the ones in violation now. So, because we don't have a proper sign ordinance, even though we had, we're, again, unaware that this was going to happen, so we.
But you still don't have a sign permit for that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Well, technically, we don't have a sign permit.
Because we are the landlords. The town is the landlord. So, I mean, we, and obviously, they're going to want us to waive the sign fee.
Didn't we pay for the sign, too?
Uh, no.
Indirectly, because we raised taxes.
Our employees put up the sign.
No, that's, I think.
So, okay. All right. Do we need executive session? Actually, we do, for personnel. So we are going to go into executive session after everybody leaves. Thank you, Scott, for your work in the.
Yes, thank you.
Concerning the library.
Start.
Good night, thank you. Stop recording, please. We'd like.